Uh, first item is agenda is approval from agenda. Make a motion. Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. Everyone agreed yes? Alright. Uh, second item is going to be approval of minutes from June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. I'll have to be here at those times.
Will you approve?
Second. Okay, all in favor for approving uh minutes from June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five? Alright.
Alright.
Everyone? Alright. So, uh, second item on the agenda is a public hearing um for the Ballston property. Uh, you want to tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, uh, thank you Chair, members of the commission. Uh, this item here is a public hearing. Um, it's for a, an application we've had on our agenda for a few months. Um, we have been working through um some of the review with the um applicants here uh to get us in a place where we thought it would be worthwhile for discussion. Um, took us a few months, but uh we were able to get to a point where our engineers are comfortable with um the, the plans and, and documents they provided. Um, there is still some outstanding items that you'll see in the engineer's memo um and that are listed as conditions of approval. Um, so we're, we're close enough where we can move forward um should the commission decide with a, a conditional approval. Um, like you said, the, the conditions we would recommend are outlined in the staff report. If something comes up uh during the public hearing, certainly could add additional conditions. Um, but with that being said, um, the, the item here is a, I believe it's sixty total units um on the old trailer park site just down uh one-ten here from City Hall. There is um additional development in mound, uh that mound will do the review on. Um, but we'll focus our attention on, on our side here, um which includes three condominium style buildings, um I believe with forty-five units in those. And then there is a um kind of villa setup with twelve units on a private drive and then three additional um custom single-family houses um on kind of the eastern side there. Um, so kind of looking through uh your staff report, I won't go into too much detail with this. I think the report somewhat speaks for itself, but if there are questions, I certainly can answer that. Um, looking at this from a density standpoint, it's in line with our comprehensive plan. Uh, when we were going through our twenty-forty planning process, um we had the intent of the um previous Serenity Hill going through, which was at the same density. Um, hence that's why our comprehensive plan is where it is. Um, so to facilitate that, um we're looking at uh rezoning to PUD um because the R-two is, is a lesser dense um development. So the, the PUD allows us the flexibility to add that additional units to then co- uh comply with our comprehensive plans, so you don't have to worry about uh any amendments to that. So, like I said, I'm kind of went through some of the zoning stuff there. Um, looking at the, the sewer and water and, and streets, it's all covered in the engineer's memo. Um, if there are specific questions, I'll do the best I can to answer those. Otherwise, um I would defer to the engineer memo. Looking at tree preservation, um in some of the documents, you will see there are some callouts of what will be uh removed and what will remain. Uh, by the time of the final plat, we would like to see a, a tabulation. We don't have the numbers of the caliper inches being removed. Um, but I did outline the um requirements of the city ordinance, so they'll be allowed to remove up to thirty percent. Anything above thirty percent will either, either need to be replaced um at a one-to-one or a hundred dollars per caliper inch fee uh paid to the city's tree preservation and enhancement fund. So, um, that'll need to be finalized before the uh, the final plat. Um, looking at the parks, trails and open space plan, um Parks Commission reviewed it and determined cash and lude to be most appropriate. Uh, it's been consistent with uh the previous renditions here, uh so no surprise there. Um, then obviously looking at some of the architectural guidelines, um they do have some of the stuff for the condominium buildings. I'm still working through some of the stuff on the single-family. I did get some stuff laid um that I can share if needed, um but obviously we will want to see some um models and, and housing varieties with the final plat to verify that the city's architectural standards are being adhered to. Then taking a look at, um, tonight is a public hearing which we have been continuing. Uh, tonight we'll give the, uh, those presence the opportunity to speak. Um, but as far as what we've received to date, uh we did include some of the written comments that we have uh received um for you guys to consider there. Um, and then I think at the very first presentation, there were a few people that spoke, um so some of you may recall uh some of those comments. Um, but with that being said, um, like I said, I'll be happy to answer any questions of the commission. Um, but you should take a look at the information provided to you. Uh, continue to hold that required hearing, allow anyone present to speak. Um, once everyone's had that opportunity, close the hearing and then uh discuss amongst yourselves uh before you look to a recommendation. Um, based on the information provided to us, um, staff will be comfortable with a, a recommendation of approval uh subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. Um, the conditions are uh of importance and then obviously if there's any additional ones, the commission wishes to add. So, uh with that being said, um, I'll open up the questions to the commission, otherwise we can certainly continue that hearing.
No, let's continue on some of the questions, right? We'll continue without a hearing. Uh, anyone um want to speak uh on the, on the matter? Please, you have the one.
Um, I could probably go grab it.
This, right?
Yep.
That's my name.
Sure.
Sir, do you want to sign in to speak?
Public hearing.
Okay.
Right, standing at the desk, sorry. Back to you.
Sure. Yeah, it's just the applicant is the only one listed, so.
It's just the applicant.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mr. Bulis, G D R Architect, we're watching, having a corner. Nick, I just want to thank you for your patience and the good stuff, appreciate it. So I sort of finally got it there and so I'm not gonna speak about anything more than pretty much is I hear for questions if you prefer, whatever you want to be considered to be so. For our real estate team, but they can really speak to how the project's going, so. Done it then, I'd like to say a few words on everyone's kind of giving out the designs from projects and so. You too, I'm glad that you can reach yourself support.
Thanks.
Um, my name is Tommy Kurt, my house is twenty-one-one-three Lamar Court in Lakeville. And um.
And I'm uh sixty-six fifty-nine, Eddie Lane, Curry, um, over, uh, over all day.
And so we're super excited to be here to talk a little bit about the development. It's been something we've been living and breathing for the last several months and it's been really fun and the exciting part of it has been so well-received amongst the agent community as well as um all the recipients of those magazines that have scanned QR codes, you've seen the belly band or within that full-page ad and have reached out to us through our website. Um, it's just been a tremendous uh impact, you can see how many people we have.
Yeah, we have a hundred and twenty of our list right now that are uh that have strong indications they'd be very interested in the property. Uh, in all four phases, uh condos, uh townhomes, uh the executives going out on the doors. Uh, it's a, it's a product that people are relying, it's a beachfront style community. Um, that they've been looking for, that just different municipalities just can't abide. Uh, so when they saw us come through, we are boarding. Uh, the, the conversations that we've been having have been all a lot of them positive, um, which isn't a shock, uh, it's really fun to listen.
How do the people learn about the development?
From the, from the article that we have.
From the article.
Also, we're just doing a lot of networking within the real estate community as well, so.
So everybody even has it on the radar, it's coming.
Yeah, and that's what we want, we want to be able to start getting that buzz going, so as we're moving forward, we can actually get this, you know, under contract development to be a great success, so, yeah.
Do we have a sense for timeline, one of assuming approvals, the next two phases, what the?
Thank you.
It's honestly City Council, uh, we gotta get mound coordinated and that puts like a September eighth. The, okay, here for both, we're sending the final file on the way, so.
So I saw, I saw one difference between the rendering that you had, which I recall is the one that we saw two months ago and in, on the mound side, you had like two minutes and then it's kind of like, it's changed. Um, the question I had around mound side, no reason I mean bringing up that just kind of question, um, but the runoff. Is the small retention pond that's behind the um unit, um condo unit, is that going to be enough? Or is that something that our engineers have put out to consider? Then considering obviously the support of.
Mm-hmm.
Our units that's on the minuterist side, but obviously with as many units, um.
I would assume they're factoring it in, I mean, it looks like based on the infrastructure.
As a whole?
Uh, and then from probably what you saw last time, you know, we batted two additional major ponds, we still got one of the houses.
So, efficient.
Those lots of big pillars, we go to mound and then if you see underneath, but we're a restrictor, created the county roads, so. In fact, we have it back though, uh, on it, just using the county ditch, so off the farm, so we really try to mitigate as much as possible, so. Calculation lines, this is about this whole development, uh, on it, so yes, the runoff is sufficient.
So, so I'm, and I'm talking about.
Yeah, you're right.
Uh, cause I thought that, that property was high, how is that water gonna not run off of the lake and run up, run up to?
Well, it burned this, so this, I'm taking this direction.
Okay.
Um, this process. This, because this is higher than this, I can take this direction and uh, because the elevation goes further up.
Yes.
I go towards the east, so I can take everything to the two major ponds and then slowly release it to the lake. So I, what I don't want to do is run it this way, I'm running it this way, I don't have time for percolation and um absorption in the process and then I'm not going against. So, it's the reason why I set off that way.
Listen, that's like a um piece uh basin D there, that I've done, down to.
This you refer to?
Basin D behind the nine unit.
Right by your fingertip, right there.
Yeah, those are just uh over four options that would take it between these houses and like that, so basically just some overflow mechanisms. All pond, you gotta design to, in case severe situations, allow overflow to refer. And that way you can control runoff and take it right, because we even have to put the neighbors to get up. Uh, eastward's the right word to allow this gravel element through here to the power pits, so. That was a part of the, I think, the job to prevent runoff and roll this just.
So you're kind of pushing it all to that dry creek that has an emergency or overflow.
Exactly, so you're not in control of those phases.
You're describing, um, what do you call that, um, some kind of like.
Restrictor.
Restrictor, your shores, you're that, so. Walk us through the whole drainage.
So the idea is that, as you know, underneath this road is a progress.
Yep.
That comes through.
And yep.
So we're could count is that we can limit the flow here and let it pond in the ditch. So it's an unofficial pond, it just means that instead of being the pipe, I don't have the exact calculations, we strictly shrink it a little bit to allow the water to pond here, because there's two things as well, if you want to slow the runoff.
Yep.
To allow it to percolate in and then try to break it as many points as possible to intercept it. So the proper terms of flow restrictor and all means is that the water still flow through that pipe at a slower rate, so you prevent the storm washing, gushing through the development down the hill.
So, um, do, do these double as a recreation area? People in the neighborhood, skating and whatever and you get squashed around here during the summer?
If you, I did show, I did, if you wish, and I know if I own the home, I did bring images of the old house and things like that, what's gonna be in soul, that's on mound side.
You're talking about the ponds, though.
These, these, these two ponds, if they have water, because remember they're percolating.
Yeah.
But if they retain water, this could be a feature of a crack, but obviously.
And the depths wouldn't be what, maybe three feet or something?
Yeah.
So kids could get into the, my risk.
Yeah, it's sort of math, and then the slopes are tapered very gradually to see the, the gray lines to prevent the drowning acid on.
Usually, usually those ponds don't have a lot of water, they're, they're ice, because they're, they're meant to, you know, slowly.
Percolate in.
Which is a pond, and then.
Percolate, I was saying.
The association.
Association will maintain all stormwater infrastructure.
Well, what we may do, once the lake ice is stable, and then that's what I you can refer to, the ice skating would be out in this area.
Yeah, and there's, there's, there's supposed to be a certain um vegetation.
Absorptive vegetation, so it could look like, it's gonna be a pond.
Yeah, I don't know that you're even gonna skate on ponds.
And, and remind me, there are two laterals you're going on, right? One between condos and one through the home, so like, what's the?
Well, there'll be some, there'll be a master.
There'll be a master association, and if they want to sub it out, they can, you know.
They need to just subject it in the condo association, but there'll be one mass association for all of our, of us.
So there's.
Yeah, it's a.
Um, and then they'll, in the, in the PUD, there'll be clear direction on how to manage these retention ponds.
There's, yeah, you, you establish a stormwater taxing district and then there is usually a stormwater maintenance agreement that are, are established. Yeah, and those are recorded against all the properties, so it's, it's clear on the chain of title, you know, all that stuff, so.
They don't become legal slots, so, yeah, so there's something that I'll do. Through the property zone that they have.
What's it, what the, where the stormwater ponds are, yes.
And the, and the whole else as well?
Yep.
I read in the report that there is some concerns regarding, you know, messable of water being in a passive clay soil.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any concerns with?
I'm sure they're looking at that and considering the soil types, I mean, man, minuterist is predominantly a, a clay community, so obviously certain techniques work better or worse, so I'm sure they're considering that when they're looking at all the stormwater.
So does that only be resolved prior to?
That's one of them, yeah, exactly, many conditions that are there, um, is making sure that the stormwater passes the, you know.
Usually, if you're, if you get a lens of clay that you've already stayed, um, filled back with forest soil and then operate, so that's the only way you can. Uh, but once you get a specific smell of origin, it's.
Any questions I ask? Um. You have a close-up discussion, is the rest of the question about?
First, if there's any somebody else want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Do we have anybody else wanting to speak on this matter? Before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed. Alright, um, I think we really should discuss the um emails and issues from the members and make sure that they're addressed. I mean, obviously we have an additional tension pond, which I appreciate, um, and then we had the explanation on how, uh, uh, I didn't see a pond at the mound side, but, you know, that runoff is going to be directed to that north.
That's a higher side, too, but.
Yeah, that is, I was concerned about the height, if you can, you know, redirect it down today, then you might, you know, sure. Seeing, and then seeing uh four retention ponds, I thought was a huge, you know, um, uh improvement uh in addressing the water issues that we had before, you know, the dry creek bit. Yeah. So any concerns that the berm may push the waters, our road coming between the beach house and whatever? Remember, there's that first house up on there, is that a road or a driveway going through there?
Um, are you talking on the mound side, though? Like right in here?
Yeah, it's been north of that going out.
Here?
To the left of that rectangle building, is there, is that a?
There's, no, there's no road, that's just, um, looks like that's um utility piping. So no, yeah, you, yeah, yeah, there's no, other than the, the hammerhead here to get access to the clubhouse and then the single-family dwelling. That's the, the roadway here and then obviously the access to service the, the buildings here. And it looks like there might be some patios or something on the backside.
We'll see what other issues, traffic was, uh, another issue. I'm trying to summarize all these current issues.
Yeah.
What about the one time we had people who wanted to add decks after the fact and they, they were too close to the property line, if we're gonna be safe on that here?
Well, yeah, we've been pretty clear with the, the applicants on, on this one as to what would be expected, like you said, that's where um, getting those model variety, um, those housing um plans, we'll be able to look at that, too, but um. Now, the expectation is that, you know, the, the, the requested setbacks would accommodate the full build-out, that's the expectation.
So road access is gonna be uh straight through?
So yeah, for these twelve villas here, there's a private drive, um, that'll service them. Um, it looks like, if I understand this, it might be a one-way and one-way out for this um twenty-four unit building here and then obviously having some access into parking and some garages for the two over here and then the three houses off of this hallstead avenue connection here.
Doesn't, I mean, I feel like listening to them, like the, it's very segmented, so as far as traffic flow and um, you know, it was, it was how the traffic was going to affect the members coming out on the uh, on the road on the left. I feel like it's not as, as previous to before. And, and it's opposite?
It is, actually, too.
Yeah. Um, environmental, the, I recall is another uh issue, um, how will we address that to um, the, the members' um concerns?
I guess you gotta determine if their comment is warranted, I mean, I mean, we, we didn't do that previously with the Serenity Hill. There wasn't any, you know, EAW or anything like that.
Is that, is that something you like to condition possibly, or?
If, I mean, if you, if you feel it's appropriate, I mean, I don't know that this scale of development would require something like that, I mean, that's something like you do with a woodland cove where you have five hundred acres, a thousand units. Um, here it's, you know, ten acres maybe and sixty units, um.
And the reason I'm bringing you up is because when the neighbors say, hey, why, why do we do that?
Hmm.
These, on record, we have, you know, clarity on why we didn't address that, I don't know.
I mean, I'm far from an environmental expert, but um, like I said, we weren't requiring it previously.
Alright, but I guess. If there are any questions, I think you can just kind of, if there's more concerns out there, it doesn't seem like there's a, 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 you know, mission. I think we'll be figured out still, I don't know. I personally feel we didn't, didn't address the runoff issue, that's, that is, you know, my highest concern. And how, I mean, I think that properties that are being sure of their, um, I, I feel like, I was, I don't know, that, so. Both, you all feel right there, that office coming related and address that, that would be my biggest concern from environment, feels like it's been addressed.
Are there any historical concerns regarding ice safety for the runoff creating extra flow into that space of, of plate? Or ice on the?
Not that I've been made aware of. Yeah, not that I've been made aware of.
What's the, and there's no new uh letters?
Uh, everything we've received up to this point was provided um in, in the report.
I mean, does it look like anything exists in place?
No, there was a couple other, I mean, yeah, I think some of that stuff came in shortly after the meeting.
Okay.
Um, the, um, the April hearing when we first presented this, I think a few items came in after that.
Alright, I'm gonna go through, if you guys, the, you know, if you want to clear discussion, that issues. That we like to live on, plus and stuff, or you think she wants to, um. I don't know, any additional questions came up since we started talking, there's a real runoff, any additional questions for, for, I, I.
Same with me. I don't think we have a question by law.
Yeah, same here. Um, let's see. Anybody want to call it up, make a recommendation? Let's make sure. Take this, I can, I just. I went to twenty, correct?
Yeah, unless you want to add anything else, there was twenty in, in the, in the staff report.
Yeah, earlier, um, yeah, like, you can add that also. Um, you know, unless you, you want to have safety in those, in the yards, the ice safety.
Like eight, nine.
Using ice more. What do you mean ice?
It's a, it's a wa- waterfall coming through creates a movement water, it creates thin ice, it's your ability to use that ice.
Oh, that means, also, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make.
I wouldn't be surprised if that happens in the win- winter, like when things are frozen.
If they had less retention pond, pond, um, issue, then they had their bodies ready to see that would form. That's why it's, and then top of that, there, the reason of retention pond to irrigate the pond.
That is required by ordinance. So yeah, if they need to drill a while, they'll have to deal that for that with the DNR, but um, yes, the re- uh, stormwater retention reuse is required for irrigation.
So, um, I'm going on to page eight, um.
Page eight and nine. Yeah, the conditions are kind of on eight, first part of nine, the recommendation would be, um, on page nine.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council, it's out, it's already reserving the properties to PUD, plan unit development, and the resolution approving the public plat. None is known according to the House of Fame, subject to conditions outlined in the staff report.
Second. All in favor? Uh, motion, uh, Mr. Man, please?
Yep, that's a recommendation, that'll be part of the City Council for final action, um, the meeting date, I believe, is the fourth. Yeah, first Monday in, in August, I believe that's uh August fourth, so.
Thanks for your time, this is me, I'm here for that.
Yeah. Commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll grant this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Yes. I'm on the agenda, too.
Now, the agenda is, uh, staff report, I'll put everybody in the, the meeting.
That is a lot of.
Heft, yes.
Paper and ink.
Very hefty. So, um, as far as a staff report is concerned, um, don't really have much for the commission. Um, trying to think what we had on our agenda last month. Um, everything was approved by the council, so trying to think of what we had. You know, two, a couple of variances were approved, um, and then obviously we continued this item we discussed tonight, so both the variances, um, you know, one on hard scrabble and one on County Road fifteen were approved. Um, I think at least the hard scrabble is submitted for their permit, I believe we're still waiting for the County Road fifteen, uh, but they have time. Um, and then looking forward to uh next month, we have at least one variance um for our August meeting, uh, which I believe is the, what, twenty-third? Or twenty-fifth, uh, it looks like, so, um, put that on your calendar, we'll have a meeting uh for at least one variance. Um, but yeah, that's really all I've got. Everything else seems to be going good, so. Any questions?
And, uh, I, I had to come back, do the chicken thing?
Yep, um, you can have residential chickens, yep. Probably, yeah. I think it's three.